All right, good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting. The San Rafael Planning Commission, Tuesday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. This meeting is called Order.
The San Rafael Planning.
Our requested staff can take a roll call to the commissioners who are present, please.
Commissioner Davidson. Commissioner Hill.
Present.
Commissioner Lubomirski.
Present.
Commissioner Privatalli.
Here.
Commissioner Saudi. I think Commissioner Saudi is absent. Vice Chair Samudzy.
Here.
And Chair Mercado.
Here.
So we have two absences. One Commissioner Davidson and Commissioner Saudi are absent.
Okay, thank you, and hopefully Commissioner Davidson will be on her way. Okay, we'll move on to the order of the agenda. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda that the commissioners would like to propose? Seeing none, we'll move on. This, I'll do a quick little introduction on the meeting procedures. Due to COVID nineteen shelter in place order, we have had to establish new ways of conducting public meetings. I'd like to ask staff if they can address how public comment will work this evening, please.
Thank you, Chair Mercado. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are accepting public comments over the telephone and through the YouTube Live chat feature. The meeting is being streamed to YouTube Live, where members of the community can provide comments on any agenda items in the YouTube Live chat at www.youtube.com backslash City of San Rafael. We also have the option for community members to attend via conference call at the following phone number. Six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight, and the meeting ID is eight seven two zero six four five four four three five pound. If you are participating by telephone and wish to provide comments, please press star nine when the chair opens the public comment period for the item you'd like to speak on. This will virtually raise your hand. Once it is your turn, you'll hear a notification that the host is inviting you to participate. At that time, please press star six to unmute yourself. You can then speak, introduce yourself, and you'll be allowed up to three minutes to provide your comments. If you are submitting comments on the YouTube Live chat feature, you can enter your public comments in the live chat box and let us know that you want your comments read out loud by writing in all capitals, "Public Comment." Then you can introduce yourself and let us know which agenda item you're speaking on. Comments in the chat are limited to three minutes worth of text. Please note, the YouTube Live chat feature does have a two hundred character limit per box. So if you have more than two hundred characters in your comment, you can enter your first comment, then hit enter, and you'll be able to add another two hundred characters in the next box. Comments will be read as submitted. Words including profanity, obscenity, or discriminatory language that disturb the decorum of the meeting will not be read into the record. If you have submitted comments prior to the meeting by email or letter, it has been forwarded to the Planning Commission and published to our website. And for more information regarding real-time public comments, please visit our live commenting pilot page
Thank you. And I think for the record, we'll highlight that Commissioner Davidson has arrived. Thank you for joining.
Thank you.
Okay, let me now describe the meeting procedures for tonight. We'll begin with a staff report, then we'll hear from the applicant, and we'll ask if the applicant can keep the presentation to no more than ten minutes. Members of the public will then be invited to speak. And we will read any comments that are made on the YouTube Live chat, and people on the conference call can speak. When they receive the notification that they've been unmuted, please keep your comments to under three minutes. Commission will then have the opportunity to ask questions of staff, applicant, or the public after each segment. We will close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for discussion and action if necessary. So the next item is urgent communications. Anyone with an urgent communication not a topic on the agenda may address the commission at this time. I think typically staff at this point would read.
Sorry.
If there's anyone, it's okay.
Couldn't hear me while I was muted, I guess.
Yes.
So if you are, if there's anyone on the conference call that wishes to provide public comment on a topic not on tonight's agenda, please press star nine now to raise your hand. While we wait to see if there's any comments over the phone, I will check the chat box. I do not see any comments on items not on the agenda in the chat, and there's nobody that has raised their hand on the phone. So we have no public comments for items not on the agenda, Chair Mercado.
Thank you. All right, next we'll move to the consent calendar. Minutes of the August eleventh, two thousand and twenty meeting. And we'll... Are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar?
So same thing as I said previously, if you are in the participant on the phone call, press star nine now to let us know you wish to comment on the minutes. And if you're in the chat, want to provide comments on the August eleventh minutes, please enter those now. We'll give that a few seconds. I'm seeing no phone comments or chat comments.
Okeydoke. Any of the commissioners have any edits, changes, or comments on the minutes?
Move for approval.
We have the motion. Second.
Second.
Great, motion and a second. No comments, edits, or changes, so... If we can take roll call, please.
Commissioner Davidson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Lubomirski.
Yes.
Commissioner Privatalli.
Yes.
Or Vice Chair Samudzy.
Yes.
And Chair Mercado.
Yes, thank you.
Can I just clarify the second on that motion, please?
I believe it was Privatalli? Commissioner Privatalli.
No, it wasn't me, actually.
It was Commissioner Hill here.
Thank you.
Okeydoke. Okay, we'll move on to the public hearing. This is one item on our public hearing tonight. Thirty-eight Upper Fremont. This is the request for an environmental and design review permit for a new single-family residence with four parking spaces on a vacant hillside lot. Parking will be provided using a mechanical parking unit located within the garage. This is APN twelve forty-one forty-eight. It's a single-family residence, hillside overlay, R five dash eight. And if we can please have staff provide its report.
Chair Mercado, if I may, I live within the buffer zone of thirty-eight Upper Fremont, so I will need to recuse myself at this point. I will rejoin at the conclusion of this portion.
Okay, thank you for letting us know.
So thank you, Chair Mercado. The application before you, as you mentioned, is the project at thirty-eight Upper Fremont. This application is for a twenty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-four square foot single-family residential development. That includes a one thousand seven hundred and ten square foot of the primary portion of the residence with six hundred and fourteen square feet of the garage and basement and under-story space. The applicant is proposing to comply with hillside design guidelines related to natural state, floor area, building height, and building step backs. Let me go ahead and show you a few slides, and just to kind of demonstrate the main topic areas of the, that I want to go over. And then I'm going to have the applicant provide their own presentation, giving you kind of a more detailed perspective of their proposal for tonight. This slide shows the north elevation. It shows the building design is basically in line with the slope of the lot. There is a terrace that provides a ten-foot step back, which is something that we asked for for hillside lots. The roof line is gabled and sloped in line with the slope of the lot as well. That's another feature that we ask for in hillside lots. This is the opposite side, the south elevation. Again, you have the maximum or the, the slope of the lot, sloping, or the slope of the home sloping in line with the slope of the lot. And then there, there's a variation in the wall that, which kind of breaks the building up into smaller elements, which is something that we ask for typically in all designs, not just hillside designs. And this slide I wanted to show you because it kind of gives you a sense of where that the terracing is. The maximum height of the building in hillside lots is thirty feet from natural grade. The applicant is proposing a twenty-foot maximum height, and this is building height measured on, as you go up the slope of the lot. The applicant is proposing twenty feet maximum height. This, this demonstrates a maximum twenty-foot height limit, and it includes the railing area. So this, at this point, the building steps back ten feet, like I mentioned earlier, and that's what you're seeing kind of on the, on the upper part of that, above that red line. So this is a cross-section on hillside lots. New development is actually asked to provide the two parking spaces that we require of all single-family residential units. In addition to that, we also require two additional spaces. The applicant tried a couple of different iterations for possible parking solutions, and this most recent iteration, the applicant provided a solution that includes a mechanical unit. I referenced general plan policy C two nine C, which allows for innovative parking solutions. This policy exists under the overall goal of just trying to provide adequate parking throughout the city. And that is under the goal, general plan goal eighteen, which states that it is the goal of the City of San Rafael to provide parking that is adequate and accessible with attention to good design. And San Rafael uses innovative approaches to providing adequate parking. So again, this is, this goal is to provide adequate parking and inclusive of residential areas. So therefore, staff believes that this proposed design is acceptable in residential areas and applies in this case. The hillside design guidelines also discuss the need to address parking, and where possible assets, the two parking spaces are located within kind of a defined area, but not within the driveway apron, but also recognizes that in certain circumstances, a variation in a design approach for providing that parking is necessary. And then it calls out things like lot slope, lot size, as some, you know, a couple of those reasons why we would need to look at kind of a different approach at providing the park, the required parking. This is one of those cases. The slope is a very steep slope. It's a unique shape, and so those two things, those two elements provide a unique circumstance that allows for a variation in how we accommodate the, the parking requirement. That said, one of the comments that was received was that this mechanical unit should be considered tandem parking, and in discussing with our engineering division, we concluded that it's not technically considered a tandem parking. However, even if we did consider a tandem parking section, SR, Centerfield Municipal Code, Section fourteen point sixteen point one six allows for tandem parking, tandem parking through the hillside design review process. So even if the planning commission tonight decided or determined that this is technically considered tandem, there is a section of our code that allows for that. So this is a photo simulation that shows what the, what kind of conceptually this ultimate design will look like when it's finished, a finished product. So the applicant, once, if the planning commission decides to approve this project tonight, the next step will be for the applicant to continue with a permit review process. The permit requirements include obtaining a grading permit, which will be reviewed by our engineering division, and obtaining a building permit, which would be, or submitting for a building permit, which would be reviewed by our building division. The building permit and the grading permit process will require submittal of structural drawings. It'll require submittal of a geotech report along with the with the founding, or along with the structural drawings that demonstrate compliance with the geotech report. And so part of the building division's task is to ensure that building is constructed, buildings are constructed in a safe manner in compliance with building code requirements. So that is something that the applicant will be required to, to do. Conditions of project approval also disclose the need to comply with standard requirements as part of the grading and building permit submittal process. So... There have been a number of comments that have been received and have been forwarded to your planning commission. I try to address those embedded I try to address those embedded in the staff report and they're included in there. But also called out a few of the, of the issues that were kind of, I felt like needed to be addressed a little bit better. In the summary comments part of the staff report, and I'm happy to go into those if your commission feels that there's. Additional questions that need to be answered. There is, I'm not recommending any additional changes related to those comments, however, there was a comment related to. The need to merge those parcels, there are currently three parcels, part of one APN. An APN is just a tax assessment. Number, so those three parcels in order to be developed do need to be merged, it's something that we knew that they needed to be done. It was inadvertently left out of the resolution so that I would recommend that that. Condition of approval be added as part of the. Action of tonight's meeting with. With the recommendation tonight. So that concludes my part of the presentation. The recommendation for tonight is adoption of the resolution approving an environmental and design review permit for a single family residence. At thirty-eight Upper Fremont with the recommendation, with the recommended conditions of approval. In the inclusive of the one I just mentioned tonight. And that concludes my report, I'm happy to answer any questions your commission may have.
Thank you, Ally. Okay, any commissioners who have any questions for staff before we go to the applicant?
I have just a quick question. The one of the points brought up, one of the correspondence was the ridge line ordinance, the height of the. The project versus the ridge line above. You looked at that, it's, it's within the, within the envelope, the project's within the envelope.
Yes, so, so the, the ridge line, I believe the comment might be related to what the proximity of that, of the property to. On the ridge line, we have a requirement that anything that's within a hundred feet of the ridge line. Go through additional process. And that applies to projects that are located within a hundred feet of. A ridge line vertically and horizontally, so if it's within a hundred feet of that ridge line horizontally. But then also within a hundred feet vertically, so that it creates kind of a. The duality of that creates a potential for an impact to that ridge line, so. Because of that, we require a different process. This isn't one of those cases, it's not located within a hundred feet of. A ridge line horizontally and vertically, so it doesn't apply in this case.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, anyone else? Other questions before we move to the applicant? No? Okay, thank you, Ally, so much. Okay, so we'll move on now to the applicant if. He can make his presentation, please.
Unmute.
Thank you.
Good evening, can anyone hear me?
There we go, yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners. Thanks for presenting our project to you this evening. This home is planned for, as Ally noted, thirty-eight Upper Fremont Drive. This project on July seventh received a full design review. Approval and they're complimentary in their findings of the project. In that it was well planned for complicated sites. Was nicely designed, it fits well within the Upper Fremont, the west end. Neighborhood context. I've shared my screen, can you see drawings on your screens? Thank you. The share little project history. We have gone through a number of iterations and meetings with several of projects. And planning department, fire department and public work staff. We've started this project with a conceptual design review in December of two thousand and eighteen. Those initial comments provided and guidance for how the project came to be through, again, a number of meetings. With staff or refined most appropriate solution to the site. So with that, and this also includes the parking solutions that have been presented in this design as well. As Ally noted, this project is on Upper Fremont Drive and the section of. Upstream my drive is really just almost due south where second and fourth intersect down. At the bottom of the hill. The house is located on the downslope side of the sites. As Upper Fremont goes wind around the site and then up around again. So both the building and driveway access are on the bottom side of that site. I've got two slides that have an aerial view showing general massing and location relation buildings. At seventeen hundred square feet minus the garage area. This is one of the smaller homes that we're proposing that's in this neighborhood of several homes at the top of the hill. And then here's yet another view of looking on how the site fits, the building fits on the site and the context of adjacent buildings. So I pulled some of these run rigs out, enlarging the next couple of sheets to kind of give you a better idea of. The building and as I can walk you through some of the attributes. So this is a three bedroom, two and a half bath home of roughly seventeen hundred and nine square feet. The intention is that through the course of the guidelines of the hillside design guidelines, as well as working with staff. Is to get this project to work with the slope conditions in the landscape attributes. The home has been cut into the hillside as to reduce the visual bulk, as recommended in hillside design guidelines. So below, below grade excavation is for the garage mechanical spaces. And a stair which then allow the bedrooms or living spaces to be at one to two stories above grade. As indicated in the initial preliminary technical report, the site is underlaid with hard residual soils. And weathered bedrock which retain competent foundation properties. And these all generally lie within about four feet of existing grade on slopes. So as per this building design, the building foundations, except for the southeast corner, which is really this corner of the driveway area. The carport. Will sit well below the, the four foot location of those soils, so well into the soils on the site. The home is approached through this carport, which is the main reason why I started with these two color images. Cars have covered parking before the, in the driveway in front of the garage. But also as one would leave the car, then the idea here is that there's a, a garden afar aside, so we've been able to. As the building was sighted, provide a. About a sixty or sixty-five square foot area that allows a garden to grow up, bring light down into the entry area. And also to pop the entry with a. A finish on the, the wall and the glazed door, more of a kind of a golden poppy color. Which is certainly very prevalent in our area in the spring. Onto here, so the. Try and read my notes, the home beside are preserving kind of both the reble trees that are to the south. So as I look at the image to the right here, reble trees will be off image this area here. And there's an oak tree that's off image over here, and there are some bay laurel trees as well across the site. The home is clad in. A heat treated, steam treated ash wood siding, which gives it a, a fire rating. And the, the, the building gables, as Ally had earlier mentioned, to indicate to the slope and direction of the site. The top level is a living floor in here, the, the middle floor being the three bedrooms and a media room. This top floor has access to the roof terrace, which is the only outdoor area in the site. There are wood guardrails which have a deep profile, which would. Allow distant views through, but up close, their depth would then provide privacy up and down. Both, you know, from the neighbor below in the street and then up onto the deck above. So. The, as a floor plan view, the home is entered from the carport here with this reference garden. And then we have the entry to a stairwell, which goes up above. The shack of parking and the garage here and mechanical space behind. This is the bedroom floor, as you come up the stairs, the media room will still be kind of more of a semi-public space in the house. Whereas through this hallway, you then have access to the three bedrooms, the bathrooms and a laundry room. One thing that we wanted to accomplish in this house with the, the use of the garden, which is not only an asset to the entry area here, but. We wanted to make the, the garden and the experience of the garden, the small space available from the bedroom and the bathroom. So with the tree planted in here, you'd be able to see. The daily change of lights as it moves through the garden and through these, these rooms, but also more of a seasonal factor. You know, one will be able to enjoy fall foliage, leaf, leaf fall, and then in the spring budding of the trees. In that area, and then all the three bedrooms have. Windows that face the north and look then down the hill towards the Miracle Mile area. And then the media room has a small door, which will step out to grid. On the upper floor, then the stair you arrive at the top, this is a, a gabled. Open ceiling room, grand room, if you will, with a kitchen, a living and dining area. There is a small powder room up here, dumbwaiter for bringing groceries up from below. And then this. Room has a large slider, which provides access to the, the outdoor area. Only one on the side here. Again, kind of back to the views that, some of the views that Ally had started with. Part of our effort to do this is create a, a fire hardened home. And then the exterior finishes include the board from concrete. As well as including the class B fire rated wooly compliant treated ash wood siding. As well, there's a class A fire rated standing steel metal roof. We're also proposing the construction of the building itself, as if the walls, floors and roof are built, it's non-combustible, firmly broken, metal framed, insulated panels. These lightweight panels come from the factory correctly sized and ready to be installed without any field modifications. So the framing does not produce, provide or produce any waste on site, which requires the off hall. The rest of the building frame will actually take place over a series of days and not weeks or months, which you typically see in a conventional wood framed building. The, the panels have a high insulation value in there. So along with the solar panels and what we anticipate as a battery storage in the garage, the goal is that this home becomes a net zero home. In utilizing the non-combustible framing and exterior finishes, interior and exterior fire sprinklers and a firewise landscaping approach. We think this home would be some of the standards, an example for new construction practices. Not just protecting from wildfires, but also from fires from adjacent and older fire prone structures that often contribute to the spread of wildfire. And then in the section. This, now these elevations are, as Ally shown, this is from the, the south elevation and then. This dashed line indicating the upper section of Upper Fremont Road. And this would be the architectural elevation of the building down the slope of the site. And then to this last section is through the roof and the deck, we are collecting. All our storm water, we have oversized a tank for if we do ever have. Larger water vents again, and then through the course of the summer, we will reuse the, reuse the storm water across the site for irrigation. New trees that are being proposed that are indicated in the design review report. Included Western red buds and dogwoods. For the work will be done as recommended by the board to explore highlighting the existing landscaping. And then defensible space and firewise landscape plan will be addressed in the building permit application with advisement from San Rafael Fire. And other fireways resources. This concludes my presentation, I welcome your comments or questions.
Great, thank you. All right, let's turn this back to the commission. Any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant, please? Nobody?
Do you know what treatment, you said it's, it's, it's dried ash, what, the siding? How do they get it fire safe?
It's, it's a, it's a steam treated ash and the stream treatment removes some of the oils that are present in most wood. So no, wood is going to be a class A, a non-combustible product, but this is class B and it has qualified as a wooly compliant product.
Any other questions? I have one on the mechanical lift in terms of the installation, you were saying there's sort of a. Pre. Or, or parts of this can be not prefabricated, but in essence, but identified elsewhere and then connected on the site. What's the? Parking lift or mechanical lift, how complicated is that or what does that installation look like?
The mechanical lift is, it's a kit of parts and it's, you know, not much different than a lot of lifts you may have seen in our repair garage for the past several decades. And this is a four post system that allows for essentially if, if we had an accurate approach. Would allow for the, the parking of three cars in the same space. But in our, in, in my use in multi-family housing, is that we use as, as a, as a pit stacking application where. Sends you a four post and the, the deck rails for the cars and the, and the mid pan. Allow for the vertical movement, which through the push of a button, any cars available through that single call of a button.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Okay. Thanks so much, Jeff. We will now turn this, open this public to the public hearing. And I'll ask staff if you could explain how the public can comment if they so choose to.
Yes, thank you, Chair Mercado, so as a reminder, if there's anyone on the conference call line that wishes to provide public comment on this agenda item. Please press star nine now to virtually raise your hand. Once it is your turn, you'll hear a notification that the host is inviting you to participate. At that time, please press star six to unmute yourself. You can then speak by introducing yourself and you'll be allotted up to three minutes to provide your comments. While, while I wait for participants on the conference call. Those are, that are in the YouTube live chat can enter their comments that they'd like read into the record. So while we. Wait for those, give those a minute here to see if anybody has any comments. Okay, so it looks like we've got one YouTube live chat comment so far. My name is Rena Harold, owner of thirty-nine Upper Fremont. I have many questions further down the road, there is a dirt road behind the house, will the owner pave that road? And that is the only comment I am seeing in the chat for now, there is one dialing caller. So I will go ahead and unmute them. So once, once the caller hears the signal, press star six to unmute yourself and go ahead and start your comments. Caller, if you are going to provide any comments, please unmute yourself. By pressing star six. Okay, I'm not seeing a response. And there are no more comments besides the one that I read on the YouTube live. Hi, if you can. Mute your device that's. Okay, so they've gone on mute here. Okay, so they've gone on mute here.
May I speak?
Okay, so then. Um, mute here.
May I speak?
Okay, so then. Yes, if you can turn off your device that's providing feedback and speak, turn off your. Your iPad or whatever you're watching it on. Okay, I'm going to put, there's another call, there's somebody else on the call, so I'm going to put the first one on mute till they can turn off their other device, so there's no feedback. So there's a second caller, I'm going to. Turn on their ability to speak, so please press star. Six to unmute yourself. Once you hear that the host has allowed you to comment. six to unmute yourself. Once you hear that the host has allowed you to comment. Okay, go ahead and provide your comments, please. Okay, go ahead and provide your comments, please.
Hello?
Okay, go ahead and provide your comments, please.
Hello?
Okay, go ahead and provide your comments, please. I'm going to put them on mute and try one more time. So it's really important that if you are listening to this meeting on a device, whether it's your computer, your iPad, and then you're trying to call in, you need to have the volume off on that other device so that there's no feedback loop. Otherwise, we're going to keep hearing each other. So go ahead and turn down the volume on the device that you're watching the meeting. And when I unmute you, go ahead and press star six and then you can begin speaking.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Jim Schmidt. And I live adjacent to the property being discussed, uh, on Espalda Court above it a bit. And I would offer the following comments for the consideration of the planning group. The first is that the rendering that you're seeing from the developer, the designer, the architect, bear no resemblance at all to the site conditions, the site environment in which the building is proposed to be constructed. I would strongly encourage every planning commission member to visit this site, to drive the access roadway and to see what's involved in getting to and from this site. I would suggest the dominant issues are as follows. There is no, I admit, add none fire department capability for access to this property. There are four switchbacks below and a couple above this site. These are a hundred and twenty to two hundred and seventy degree turns. They're on a grade. And there's no way, I, I doubt even that a FedEx van can make that road without backing and maneuvering around these switchbacks. Related to that, in terms of access, this is not a number of parking space issue, but the roadway is very substandard. It is a one lane road. And there are long stretches of it without any passing opportunity whatsoever. So perhaps that works with a few residents below and above the site. But as you add more, you're invariably going to get cars in opposite directions trying to pass. And it simply is not a viable operation. I would strongly encourage you to have your traffic engineering department look at this with careful eye as to the safety, uh, for access and ingress as well as emergency vehicle access. Uh, but the most important key is there is no way to get fire service to that site. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm seeing no more comments in the chat box and there is one more caller on the line, but has not raised their hand. If the caller on the line, what wishes to make, uh, a comment, please press star nine to raise your hand and then I can.
Rafi, I see something in chat. Somebody asking to make a comment.
So the person who just, uh, indicated they'd like to make a comment, go ahead and press star six to unmute yourself and make your, uh, comment, please.
Um, I'm on the Zoom chat, so it's not star six for me. Is it my turn?
Yes.
Lovely, thank you. My name's Mark Abadi. Are we talking about the Markard Property House? The thirty-eight Upper Fremont?
No, this is thirty-eight Upper Fremont.
Yes, exactly. And, and it's, yes.
Not on Markard?
No, it, it, yes, I understand. It's the upper house from the Markard Avenue, uh, one. So, uh, my name is Mark Abadi. Um, I live with my partner, uh, Zenet, uh, on eleven Markard, which is just next door to this property. I, I, I know you think it's not, but it is. It's, it's next door.
It, it isn't. This is a different one. You're talking about, I think, fifty-two, fifty-four Fremont.
Oh, right.
Is Upper Fremont, which is up the hill from this location.
Thirty-eight Upper Fremont.
That's the house in question.
Is that what we're, that's, we're next door to them? Yeah, so we are, we are neighbors to that property. This is the one with the, with the vacant lot below it, right?
No. Um, Chair Mercado, if I may just suggest that we allow them to make the comments, but this is related to a different property, but it would be fine to allow them to make the comments.
Okay, well, this is the comment with regards to thirty-eight of Fremont, uh, as far as we're aware. Um, we, we're, we're on eleven Markard, which is the property just below to the right of this. Um, the, the area is surrounded by a significant amount of vegetation and redwood trees. Um, the, there are local wildlife and deer, uh, that is constantly there in the area. Our concern is mainly for, for this, uh, disruption to the wildlife area as well as previous gentleman's comments about the upper area having very little access. We have seen, uh, even delivery vans reversing dangerously up and around these roads i- in order to try and get access. There is absolutely no fire access. But also the, the damage to the environment, to the nature and the environment, and there's no provisions in the build out for actually protecting these trees. There is simply, um, paying some money towards. Right. So, so, so our concern is about the, is the, the disruption to the environment as well as the safety for the fire, uh, trucks in, in this with regards to this property. I would agree with the gentleman who, who came on last, uh, saying that really you have to visit this site to understand exactly what, what is special and unique about this. In addition, it is a waterway. The entire structure is a water, um, offshoot for the winter areas. There is a river that runs underneath and through, um, and particularly in the winter months when it's raining. So we, we're concerned about, uh, allowances for, for the natural course of this hillside. That's, that's all I've got to say on that. Thank you for, for listening.
Okay, uh, we have a, uh, comment in the chat, uh, with a question, how will construction materials be delivered to the site? And then it looks like we have another caller on the line who, if they want to speak, please press star nine to raise your hand. There's one more caller on the line that if they wish to speak, press star nine to raise your hand, please. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and when, uh, when you hear the tone, go ahead and press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead, please.
Hi, yes, this is Rena Harrell. I sent you a chat earlier. I live at Upper, uh, thirty-nine Upper Fremont and I've been here, uh, long enough to have gone through the construction of seventy-five and seventy-seven Upper Fremont. So I'm aware of all the issues that can arise, but I'll tell you about the fires that we've had around here and the, um, inability of the fire trucks to get up here. Um, and I know, um, there was a house that, if you go down the dirt road behind the new, the potential new house, there was a house that burned down there about a year and a half ago. We've also had a fire. I'm almost at the top of the hill. There was, um, I think it's seventy-nine Upper Fremont. They had a fire once and the, the fire trucks could not make it out here, up there. Um, so fire is a big issue. Um, also bringing supplies. It, it's impossible with the concrete trucks, with, uh, lumber trucks, et cetera, et cetera. So those are concerning to me. Um, additionally from where the house is, uh, currently supposed to be. And then continuing Upper Fremont to my house, which is the very next house on top, is private property. In fact, it's my road. And it's already in disrepair and I'm very concerned about people driving up there, I mean, trucks and et cetera. So those are big concerns. I have others, but we can talk about that later. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm not seeing any further comments in the chat nor on the phone. And through the chair, if I could just, uh, share my, my screen with you, I just wanted to clarify. Uh, I think there was some confusion about where the property is located from and respect to the one caller. So I'm going to try and share my screen here. So the, uh, the caller that had called in, this is the property where they're located at, at eleven Markard. The property that we're discussing tonight is right here. So just wanted to clarify that for both the public and the commission.
Thank you, Rafi.
So I can close the public comments I'm seeing.
Okay, great. All right, we'll close the public comment of public hearing for this item, bring it back to the commission. And, uh, I know that there's a lot of information raised, so we can go through, I can either roll call commissioners or if any of the commissioners have questions for, uh, maybe the applicant in response or any comments they want to start discussing, I'll put that out there now. Go ahead, Commissioner Davidson.
My question is about the fire department. My understanding is that they have to have gone up to visit the site and conclude that they can provide service to the house before it can be allowed to be built. Am I correct about that?
Yes, the fire department did review the application. They have noted that it, it's a difficult, it's a difficult site. It's a difficult access. Um, the roadway is narrow. The roadway does have these curves and so access to that location is not simple. Um, but it is, this is a legal lot. Um, and so our obligation to allow development within our parameters, making sure that they comply with the hillside design guidelines, development standards, um, um, is permitted, is permissible through the design review process. So while the fire department does recognize that there's difficulty in accessing this location, um, the other thing that I would mention is that there is, um, a fire hydrant, um, on the property or within the, possibly within the right of way, but like at that corner, uh, where it jigs back up the hill. Um, so there is, so there is, uh, fire, uh, a fire hydrant there. And then the last thing I wanted to add is that they are going to be obligated to up their fire, um, fire requirements. So they're going to have to provide the sprinklers that are required for all new housing developments. Um, they're going to have to provide, um, materials that are fire retardant and that will be reviewed and evaluated as part of the building permit processes is typical for, um, single family homes.
Okay. And I guess the same goes with the drainage issues. Of course, it's evaluated, uh, drainage before and how it's impacted after the construction of the house. And they'll have to mitigate any additional flows and that's not going to go unnoticed. It will be, um, done during construction phase as far as all the details of the drainage plan, right?
Yeah, that was something that was, um, discussed in, um, initially during the review process, but I'm in addition to that, our engineer has required that they comply with the county's, um, stormwater, um, uh, stormwater pollution prevention plan and
Yes.
in addition to that, they provided, as you, as, uh, Jeff mentioned, the applicant mentioned, they provided, um, water retention tubs within their, within the, um, understory of that building. So it'll continue to be evaluated as part of the building permits supplemental, but yes, that is part of the review.
And, uh, a couple of things. I was wondering, Rafi, you showed the map to show us the relationship of the caller versus the proposal. There was also the last caller, the lady that spoke about her concerns about construction equipment. And, um, I was wondering if you can show us where, do we know where that lady lives in relation to the proposed house?
Yes, uh, Rafi, if you have that map, I can, I can probably, I can probably bring it up, but if you have it handy, that would be helpful.
Yep.
So, um, the orange, as Rafi was saying, the orange is where the property, um, this project site is. Um, thirty-nine is if you go down, that's thirty-nine. That was one of the commenters. Um, and then there, I believe there was somebody on Espalda, which is, if you continue going beyond on Upper Fremont, um, I believe there's a, it turns around and it ends up dead ending onto a property and on the other side of that is Espalda.
Okay. Yeah, I, there's always a concern with construction, uh, material delivery on this really steep site, so I'm curious to hear from the applicant. I'm pretty sure they're going to probably excavate and pave the driveway first so that they can utilize it as delivery coming in and out for minimizing impact with the rest of the construction. But I, I'm just curious to hear from them because it is a difficult site to access. That's all my questions, comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pravatali? Do you want to go next?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, you know, in reading, um, some of the, uh, letters that came in, um, I am also concerned about access, uh, for the fire department. Um, I understand that there is a national fire prevention, I believe it's association, NFPA, um, standard that the roads do not meet. And so, um, that suggests that, you know, as the commenters have, um, said, fire vehicles are actually unable to access to the site. And, um, in fact, there was a, um, story that was submitted, I think via letter, uh, that talked about the, um, need for fire department staff or, or, uh, first responders to, uh, physically carry a fire hose, um, up a couple hundred feet in order to access a recent, uh, fire in the location. And, um, and then I, you know, I did drive up there, uh, yesterday and I can confirm, um, that it is, um, what I would say a, a road that we would not build, uh, today and using modern, uh, requirements, uh, for safety and, and, um, access by fire personnel and emergency responders. Uh, it looks like, I believe this is the case, that it was, um, designed prior to those requirements being put into place. Um, possibly in the late eighteen hundreds or early nineteen hundreds. And so that, um, provides some context and sort of like reasoning for, um, the, the gap between, um, current safety standards and, um, that area. Um, I'll also mention that, you know, I agree with the person who, who, who called in to say that, you know, having the ability to pass, uh, having traffic, the inability for traffic to pass each other. you know, having the ability to pass, uh, having traffic, the inability for traffic to pass each other. That did seem accurate to me based on, uh, visiting the site. And, um, that's another concern for, um, for me with regard to fire particularly. Because if, um, a fire truck, you know, goes as far as it can go, uh, up the hill, I imagine that, uh, cars coming down evacuating during a fire may be unable to actually pass the, uh, the fire truck. So, um, people would have to, you know, probably, uh, escape to a certain degree by foot. And I know that, um, some people are simply not able to do that. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? No one else? Okay. Well, I won't reiterate. I agree, I think the fire access was kind of interesting as well as bringing the supplies. But, I mean, I think for me, what's interesting about those two issues is that this is a public right of way. So the safety standards on a public right of way, I feel like, um, are a bit of a challenge to carry over to an applicant on a private buildable lot. So I, I don't really have any comments besides what's already been stated. And unless any other commissioners have any, um, we could entertain a motion for, um, for the item with a reminder that we have the additional condition of approval, that the lots be merged.
And just to clarify, this item is for the environmental design review, correct? Or to approve the private designer review?
Yeah, this is environmental, environmental design review. So this still is going to have to go through its normal channels of building, the grading permitting and building.
Right, so this is, yeah, so this is to explore all those, uh, yeah, I'm making motion in favor of, uh, approving the, uh, the environmental design review permit.
I'll second.
So I'll bring this back. If the commissioners want to discuss anything, I will ask if we modify the motion to include staff's recommendation that additional conditional, condition of approval, that the lots be merged as a condition of this approval be included in the resolution.
So Agreed.
And I know Ally had to step away for a second, so I'll give you a second to catch up if you have questions or.
Yeah. I don't, I, I didn't catch who made the motion, my computer went out, um.
I did.
Okay.
So I believe it's, yeah, Commissioner Samutzi. And then seconded by Commissioner Lubomirski.
Thank you.
So I brought it back to the commission, if there's anybody who wants to deliberate or have any issues. Otherwise, I will ask Ally to take roll call.
Um, I'll, I'll just comment that, yeah, it's, it's a really tough lot. But it's, I mean, it's going, the foundation work alone is going to cost more than the value of the home probably. But if a person, it's a buildable lot, it's a public road, um, you know, it's, I, I don't, I mean, there are concerns, yeah. But there are houses there already that have the same, you know, concerns. So, yeah, I think it's, it'll be interesting, but I can't, can't hardly say no.
Good comment. I agree, and I think I would just remind for those that may have interest in this project that this is just one of the steps where a public comment could potentially be included as there's additional building permitting and other portions of this project that will advance. Um, so again, I think we have the motion second, I'll ask for the roll call then.
Commissioner Davidson?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Lupski?
That me, yes.
Are you?
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Pravat Ali?
No.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, Vice Muzi?
Yes.
Yes.
I think, uh, Ally's having some, um, video difficulties, let me step in here. So, uh, what I heard is that the motion carried by a vote of five to one with one no and one, um, sorry, four, four high votes, uh, one no, one abstention and one absent.
Yes.
Motion carried as presented with the addition of one condition of approval. And, um, what, I will just remind everybody of the, um, the appeal rights, the planning commission decision is final unless appealed to the city council within five business days, ending Tuesday, September twenty-second at five P M. Anyone wishing to appeal this decision should contact the city clerk by email at city dot clerk number two at cityofsanrefell.org or by phone at four eight five three zero six six to make arrangements for filing of an appeal.
Great. Thank you both. Okay, and thank you to the applicant. We'll move on to our third item of the night. It's like, this is the progress report on the San Rafael general plan, twenty forty downtown precise plan. And before I read all that, just making sure, okay, great, Commissioner Hill is back.
And before, uh, before we get started here, I'd like to, uh, introduce our project manager for the general plan update and the downtown precise plan. Some of the new commissioners may not know him, Barry Miller is a sole proprietor. He's been working with the city since, um, mid twenty seventeen and he, uh, basically functions, acts, feels and looks like a staff person. Uh, so, uh, Barry is very familiar with the process and he's going to walk you through, uh, an update on where we are and, uh, we'll be happy to answer any questions at the end.
Uh, thanks, Raffi. I'm going to share my screen and walk through a PowerPoint at this point and, uh, then we'll have some discussion at the end. Okay, um, can everyone see that? Okay. Want to confirm that the power, that the screen share is working.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Uh, thanks, Raffi, and good evening. I have met most of you, but I don't think I've met all of you. And, uh, what we're going to do is give you a preview of general plan twenty forty this evening. You're going to be hearing a lot about this project at the, at, uh, commission meetings over the next several months. And we're starting this evening with a, a bit of a briefing before we get into the public hearings and the weeds on the actual policies in the plan itself. Um, this really is an opportunity to kind of lay out the highlights of the plan and the schedule for, uh, adoption and feel any questions that the commission may have and also provide the public with a chance to, again, ask any questions about primarily about the process moving forward. And although this slide highlights general plan twenty forty, embedded in the general plan is, uh, a parallel project, which is the downtown precise plan. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the downtown precise plan in this presentation as well. So I think most of the commissioners are familiar with the general plan requirements. Every city and county in California is required by state law to adopt a general plan for its long-term growth. That's usually a twenty-year horizon and it covers the entire city plus a planning area that extends beyond the city limits and includes unincorporated areas that are commonly associated with the city. So in the case of San Rafael, our general plan covers places like the Country Club Neighborhood, Bayside Acres and Los Ranchitos that are sort of islands within the city. It also covers Santa Venetia, Lucas Valley, Marinwood, which are, um, a little bit more, uh, self-contained or, or removed from the city, but those are within our planning area. Uh, what you see on the screen now are the eight mandatory elements of the general plan. Um, on the right side, you see those, um, seven topic areas that are in blue, land use, circulation, housing, et cetera. The reason that environmental justice is highlighted in a slightly different color is that it's a new requirement. This just went into effect about three years ago and it is, um, the eighth element of the general plan, that those, those first seven have been required for the last thirty-five years. But it's a recent addition that we have to address environmental justice in the general plan and it's timely for a number of reasons. Um, the optional elements, these are elements that a city or county can choose to add, they're not required by state law. San Rafael has, uh, in the past, adopted optional elements and we've carried some of those forward and, uh, tweaked them a bit in the revision to the general plan. I'll talk about each of the elements in the coming slides and, um, provide a, a quick overview of each one. So the reason that we're updating the general plan now, uh, the, the title of the existing general plan is general plan twenty twenty. Uh, that does not mean it was written in twenty twenty, that means that was the horizon year, that was the end term of the plan. It was actually written two thousand to two thousand and four and adopted in two thousand and four. It's been amended a few times, but it's time to update that document. Uh, the state recommends that general plans are updated every ten to twenty years. So we're following within that window of time and looking forward to twenty forty. Uh, obviously there are some practical reasons to update the general plan. We have new projections for growth in San Rafael. There are a lot of state laws that have been adopted in the last fifteen years. And although we've amended the plan periodically to keep pace, this is kind of a cumulative attempt to incorporate responses to various state laws that have, uh, been passed. There are also a lot of new issues and priorities. And although the general plan twenty twenty was a forward-thinking document, um, it, it didn't anticipate where we are today with respect to things like climate change. And so there, um, there is an important opportunity to incorporate those, um, those issues into the plan. It's also a chance to engage the community in this conversation about the long-range future of San Rafael. That conversation happened twenty years ago when the last plan was done and it's happened again over the last few years as we've done this plan. Uh, that being said, a lot of the content of general plan twenty twenty continues to be relevant. This wasn't a case where we started from scratch. We're carrying forward a lot of the good work that was done in general plan twenty twenty, which most folks feel has worked pretty well in guiding development in the city. So this is a quick overview of our process. As Raffi mentioned, we started about three years ago by preparing a work program and appointing a steering committee. Uh, more on the steering committee in the next slide, but we, uh, we spent the first year of the process uh, really inventorying existing conditions, collecting a lot of data about where we are today and where we're headed, uh, what some of the guiding principles are for the future of the plan, for the future of the city. And then moving into the policy stage. And I'll talk a little bit more about the policy stage in a moment. Um, twenty twenty, at the beginning of the year, we were drafting the plan and vetting it with our steering committee and we're now entering the plan adoption phase. I will say we're a little behind where we wanted to be at this point. We had hoped to get the plan adopted right around now, but the pandemic interfered with our plans. And although we've continued to more move forward, it's been a little bit of a slog the last six months trying to coordinate all of these, uh, various pieces of this process and bring everything together, but we're almost there. Uh, so the steering committee was appointed by the city council in December twenty seventeen. There were twenty-four members representing an, uh, diverse array of stakeholders, including, uh, this planning commission and, uh, Baronice Davidson served as a, a great representative of the commission to the steering committee. Uh, Jeff Schopert was the alternate prior to his departure from the commission. Uh, we had other city commissions and the city council represented on this committee, a large number of interest groups, neighborhood groups. Uh, there were students, there were, uh, representatives of the environmental community, the chamber of commerce and so on, and there were alternates. So if someone wasn't able to attend, their alternate was there. So we almost always had, uh, full complement of about twenty-four people around the table debating these issues that we're talking about tonight. We had twenty-five meetings, including three that were done through Zoom during the shelter in place and wrapped up our work in June of twenty twenty. So in addition to the steering committee, which was really kind of a sounding board for policies, the, uh, process included community workshops, kind of the traditional, uh, community workshop format. And these were, uh, were done in different locations around the city. There were pop-up workshops, you may have seen us at the farmer's market, uh, or the art walk. Uh, we had a Spanish language outreach program, which included a large number of oral interviews in Spanish, working with the Canal Alliance. Uh, our website, sanrefel2040.org had a large, um, following, I'll say. And there was an interactive component to that where the, where we had three hundred subscribers. You could sign up and basically answer questions and weigh in on different issues. You still can today, actually, the website is still live and active and, uh, received over twenty-five hundred comments through the website. Uh, we've done periodic presentations to not just the commission, but to other city commissions and the city council and meetings with a lot of the neighborhood groups in San Rafael, as well as the Federation of San Rafael Neighborhoods and other organizations that represent multiple neighborhoods. We also had a school outreach program, primarily working with, uh, third and fourth graders actually, and engaging them in conversations about the future of San Rafael. It was a really cool process and, um, Laurel Dell Elementary School kids are to be thanked and congratulated for all the great work that they did. So what I'd like to do is highlight, uh, what's new and different about general plan twenty forty. And again, I want to reiterate the point I made earlier that we're not starting from scratch with the general plan. Um, fundamentally, our approach to this project was to start with the existing general plan and really do what I would call an audit of its policies and programs. So it wasn't like we said, all right, let's start with a clean slate. What we did instead was really walked through each of the policies and programs in the existing plan and said, hey, does this still make sense? Does it need to be updated? Does it really capture the issue? Uh, what are we missing? And, um, we ended up adding a lot of content to the general plan and taking a little bit away. But mostly, I would say, it's, it really builds on, uh, the prior plan. And actually that plan built on general plan two thousand, so it's continuing a tradition, I would say, of good long-range planning. Um, one of the things that's new is we have new growth forecasts. So these are the forecasts that we're using for the general plan update. Uh, we're looking at a, uh, projected increase of about forty-two hundred households over the next twenty years, which is a fifteen percent increase over current conditions, uh, roughly nine thousand additional residents and roughly four thousand additional jobs over the twenty-year time period. Uh, these are actually pretty similar to the forecast that the, uh, that were in the two thousand plan, that were in the, the general plan twenty twenty from twenty years ago. Um, in, interestingly, we didn't grow as fast as we thought we were going to. So our general plan twenty twenty anticipated this kind of growth, but it, it was a much more moderate rate of growth. Um, we had a recession in there, we had very high land and construction costs that tended to slow down the pace of development. And as a result, there's a backlog of, um, of needed housing in the community that this general plan tries to address. Uh, another, uh, new emphasis in this plan is what I would call a climate and equity focus. These are really two separate issues, although they intersect. And, uh, significant emphasis in this plan on climate change, both from the standpoint of, um, responding to climate change by reducing greenhouse gas emissions and implementing our climate action plan, but also responding in, in terms of adapting to become a more resilient city. And climate change on, uh, on the city through policies on sea level rise, wildfire prevention and, uh, more severe storms and extreme heat event, heat events and so on. Um, the equity focus is really an outcome of both the state laws on this subject, but also demographic changes in the city. There, um, are significant issues of income inequality in San Rafael. Affordable housing needs are very substantial and, uh, there is a need for more inclusive governance so that the whole community can be involved in setting policy for the city. And there's a strong emphasis in the general plan on making that happen. Um, the content of the plan has been reorganized somewhat. Obviously, we have state mandates for how the, what the general plan needs to cover, but, um, we, uh, took sustainability, which was its own element of the plan and actually made it a cross-cutting theme of the plan. So rather than having a freestanding sustainability element, this is now, uh, there are policies in every element of the general plan that speak to the need to grow more sustainably and to, um, to incorporate climate action measures. Uh, air and water quality was, uh, its own element before. We've incorporated into the, we've incorporated it into the conservation element. We have added climate change explicitly to the conservation element. So although it's a theme, it's also part of the title of that element. It is now called the Conservation and Climate Change Element of the General Plan. There is an infrastructure element in the plan that's been expanded. So that is now called the Community Facilities and Infrastructure Element. And it it looks at more than just sewer, water, drainage, and so forth. It also looks at schools and police and fire and libraries and the different services that government provides in the city. We have expanded the focus of the community design element to highlight historic preservation as one of the major topic areas. And then the previous general plan included a governance element, and that's been incorporated into the what we're now calling the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Element of the General Plan, which meets that state requirement for an environmental justice element. We actually talked with the Planning Commission in January or February about map changes. And some of you were at the meeting where we brought you this map and walked you through the changes we've made. So I won't go into this in detail. Really, it's just to say that the map is an important part of the general plan. This sets the framework for the zoning map for the city. We were able to consolidate some of the categories. So whereas the existing general plan map has almost thirty categories, the new map has nineteen categories. And we have consolidated the downtown categories from six into one by having this precise plan that's more focused on downtown. Again, I won't go into the the details, but I I do want to add that the changes that were made to this map are generally not substantive changes. There are, there are a handful of changes where the designation went from one category to another. But for the most part, the changes that we've made to the map are more what I would describe as housekeeping, either to reflect the consolidation of the categories or reflect development that's happened in the last fifteen years. But large sites like the San Rafael Rock Quarry, for example, continue to be shown with the same designation that they are in General Plan 2020. And there is no conversion of greenfield or open space area to urban use in this plan. It's a one hundred percent infill plan. The also under the heading of what's new, this was an opportunity to weave in some of the more recent plans that have been done for the city. So the General Plan 2040 includes the station area plans for downtown and the civic center, the plan for the canal front and the design guidelines that were done, and the other plans that you see listed here. And when I say it includes these plans, it doesn't literally include them. They're not adopted by reference or anything like that. These continue to be freestanding plans, but they're referenced in the general plan. They kind of nest in the general plan and and the plan provides really a comprehensive framework for all of these plans that have been done over the last fifteen years. So they're they're effectively integrated into the general plan. I mentioned that when we began this process and began meeting with our steering committee, one of our first tasks was to prepare guiding principles for the future of San Rafael. And we developed this graphic with our steering committee to really look at what will it take for San Rafael to be a thriving city by twenty forty? And there are these kind of five thematic areas that form the basis for guiding principles that you can see on here. I also want to point out that the bedrock of these principles, what we're calling our foundation, are things like, are really the things that the previous general plans have accomplished, which are preservation of of open space in the city, great neighborhoods, revitalize downtown, and so on. So again, we're building on our successes in the past and then looking at the new challenges that face the city in the next twenty years. So I'm going to move now into the elements of the plan. Again, I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. We're going to have a chance to talk about a lot of this stuff over the next few months during our hearings. So this is really just to kind of dip your feet in the water about what's in each element. So the land use element is really where we talk about how and where the city will grow. I do want to point out that most of the growth, those four thousand four hundred units that were forty two hundred households that we were talking about earlier are generally going to be in downtown San Rafael. About half of the growth that's forecast by the general plan is downtown. Much smaller percentage, roughly twenty percent, is in the North Gate area, what we're calling the North San Rafael Town Center. And then about twenty percent in southeast San Rafael, which includes the canal area, and then the southeast San Rafael Employment District extending really from downtown out to the base of the Richmond Bridge. A lot of the emphasis in the plan is how to focus growth in these areas and how to build more walkable and bike-friendly neighborhoods and reduce some of the barriers to housing production in the city. So we have some streamlined streamlined development standards in the plan and good, strong policy foundation for emphasizing affordable and workforce housing moving forward. There's also a lot of emphasis on sustaining strong neighborhood centers, but we recognize that a neighborhood center, which could be like a Leteralinda Shopping Center or Andy's Market or something that really serves the surrounding neighborhood, it may be difficult to sustain all of the centers we have moving forward as people change their shopping habits and some of the uses in those centers become obsolete. So we're really looking at encouraging more mixed-use development and housing in those neighborhood centers moving forward. Those are also opportunities for 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 density and for multifamily housing within the setting of a generally a low-density neighborhood. The other point here is that we're retaining all of the industrial land in the city. This is a little bit of a controversial issue with the steering committee. We had a lot of conversations about whether it might make sense to allow housing on some of the industrial land supply. But I think at this point, the thought is we really want to retain our industrial land, both to create jobs and generate sales tax revenue. And actually, there are some greenhouse gas benefits because if you don't have that industrial land in San Rafael, it disappears from Marin County because there really aren't very many other places in the county where you can have all of the uses that are on the industrial land that we have. And that would require more driving to get to those services. So moving on to mobility element, this is really where we talk about transportation. And again, I could spend a long time on any of these slides, and I'm just going to touch briefly on one of the most important and impactful recommendations of this element, which is, most of you are familiar with the concept of level of service. This is how traffic impacts of a new development have been measured for the last forty years. You know, there's LOS A, B, C, D, E, and F at different intersections or on road segments. The state of California is basically prohibiting the use of level of service in environmental review documents now. So we're shifting to a new metric for measuring transportation impacts, which is called vehicle miles traveled. It's essentially how much driving is going to take place as a result of this development project and then looking at whether it exceeds certain thresholds. I do want to also point out that although that's the metric that we're emphasizing, that we're not abandoning level of service entirely. There will continue to be a level of service process or new development. It's something that is still important in terms of addressing congestion impacts, but it won't be used in environmental review. The other point I wanted to make about mobility is that this element is really focused on increasing alternatives to driving and to the automobile, including more bicycle infrastructure, better pedestrian and safer pedestrian infrastructure, and then working with our partner agencies to sustain transit in the city. And again, we're taking the long term. A lot of this was written before COVID. And we've addressed that, you know, a lot of these agencies and and basic services like riding the bus have been impacted by the pandemic, and we need to to really be working hard at restoring those services during the recovery period. So moving on into the conservation element, this is where we address our natural resources. It's also where we address climate change. We're carrying forward a lot of the content and I would say strengthening a lot of the policy basis in this element for things like street trees and urban forestry. There are policies to support dark sky ordinances and addressing light pollution moving forward. Stronger emphasis on things like green infrastructure and creek restoration and really looking at the role of the environment in in addressing climate change resilience. And a lot of the climate change action plan is woven into this element especially, but also through the other elements of the plan. The safety element of the plan is where we address natural hazards. Also, other types of hazards like hazardous materials. But the focus here really is on earthquake preparedness and response, wildfire prevention and response, so vegetation management. A lot of the recent work that's been done on the wildfire prevention plan is woven into this. And sea level rise adaptation. So San Rafael is one of the most vulnerable cities in the Bay Area for sea level rise impacts. When you look at those maps of where we're going to be in twenty one hundred or twenty fifty, it doesn't look good for a lot of the southeast part of the city and actually some of the other areas like Santa Venetia. So we we felt it was appropriate and important to really elevate. Sorry, that was an unattended pun. Elevate the profile of of sea level rise in the plan. And there is a, there's a whole series of policies that deal with this topic area. There's also a sea level rise overlay that appears on the general plan map itself. So you can immediately see the areas most likely to be impacted by the horizon year of the plan. Parks, rec, and open space, these are two separate elements in the current general plan. We're merging them into a single element because they are very interrelated. We're also expanding some of the park policies and making a very strong case for the city of San Rafael, preparing a parks master plan, something it doesn't have now and and I don't think has ever really had, at least in the sort of the current state-of-the-art or best practice of of doing a park master plan. With respect to open space, I think in the past, the focus of the open space element has really been more on acquisition. And there have been a lot of benefits to having a strong acquisition policy. We've protected seven thousand acres of open space in the planning area. But at this point, the focus is shifting more toward the management of that open space. So it's less about what can we acquire and more about how do we manage the very large asset that we already have, which is vulnerable to wildfire and invasive species, illegal encampments, and all of these issues that aren't really completely covered in the current element. So it's really more of a management strategy for dealing with current open space inventory. Community design and preservation, I think we've we've beefed up this element and also put a strong emphasis on protecting the cultural heritage of the city. So there are a number of policies and actions that are new related to historic preservation. We've also reorganized a lot of the existing content of this element to highlight the importance of attractive streets and public spaces, what we call the public realm. So this includes things like plazas and street, street furniture and so on. So there's policy guidance on those topics. I mentioned at the beginning the requirement for an environmental justice element under SB one thousand. Really, it's called an environmental justice element under state law, but when you look at the statute and what is required, it's much more than that. And so we are putting a slightly different spin while still meeting the state requirements and calling this the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Element. Originally, we were calling it the Justice, Equity, and Diversity and Inclusion and using the acronym JDI. But at this point, we're just, we're focusing on those three issues. And and these six areas that you see highlighted highlighted on the screen are each the focus of a goal and a number of policies and action programs. And again, in some respects, this weaves through the whole plan. So it's an element of the plan, but it's also kind of a theme that runs through many of the elements. If you want to point out, the age-friendly community, it's slightly different than the other elements, which are heavily oriented towards lower-income communities. The age-friendly is really how do we make sure that the the fastest-growing segment of our population, which are older adults, is addressed through our policies and programs effectively? So there are, there are a whole series of policies on that. The neighborhoods element, this is a unique part of the general plan. This is where we provide kind of, it's where the rubber meets the road, so to speak, because it's where we take our citywide policies and kind of apply them at a much more fine-grained level and divide the city into these thirty-three planning units and then present much more place-specific policies for neighborhoods of San Rafael. And what we've done is we've organized this into five larger planning areas, which you can see on the, in the little map that's down on the lower part of your screen. You know, north San Rafael, San Pedro Peninsula, central San Rafael, downtown and southeast San Rafael Canal. So for each of these areas, there's a neighborhood profile and then a discussion of the neighborhood issues and policies. And we did this element really in in concert with the neighborhoods themselves. So we used surveys and direct meetings with a lot of the the neighborhood organizations in the city to develop the content of this element. I'm not going to put a slide up for every one of these elements. We're coming closer to the end of the presentation. I just did want to point out that there are these other, these four additional elements in the plan. Noise looks at the sources of noise and policies to mitigate noise impacts. Community services and infrastructure. Like I mentioned earlier, schools, libraries, park, not parks, sorry, utilities and so on. Economic vitality, again, carried forward from General Plan 2020, looking at our business community and also workforce development and that kind of career ladder from school to 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 employment to to success and opportunity. And then the arts and culture element, which which in some respects weaves closely with the economic vitality element, looks at arts as both a kind of a unifying force in the community, an economic engine, and a way to address some of the the social equity issues that are covered by the plan. Now, before I move on, that note at the bottom. So housing is an element of the general plan. It is not part of this update because it's updated on a schedule that's set by the state of California. So when you are through with the General Plan 2040, you'll start to hear about the housing element update. That's due to the state at the end of twenty twenty-two. So we don't expect to begin work on the housing element until sometime mid-next year once the general plan is adopted. Just to highlight some of the key implementing actions of the general plan, we're calling for PDA, this Priority Development Area Planning for North Gate and Southeast San Rafael. These are the two new priority development areas that have been designated by the city council. And a a a long-range plan will be needed for each of those areas. So that's something that will also happen in the next couple of years. The city has received funding to do an update to the Canal Community-Based Transportation Plan. There is a strong recommendation for shoreline adaptation planning in the general plan in response to sea level rise. I mentioned the housing element and the park and open space plan previously. Okay, because this is a long presentation, I'm not going to go into detail on the precise plan. I have two slides on this, and then I'm going to turn it over to Rafi to just kind of walk us through the schedule. The downtown precise plan, just for context, it replaces a plan that's now twenty-seven years old that was really, it's been the guiding document for downtown planning and zoning since nineteen ninety-three, our vision for downtown San Rafael. And the what the update does is it it really looks for new opportunities for housing and to, I think, kind of build on the momentum that's happening region-wide to really say this is the best place for growth in San Rafael, both from a transit standpoint and a greenhouse gas reduction standpoint. But also, there are, there are some unique development opportunities downtown. There's a business community that would benefit from the housing being present. In other words, kind of a more twenty-four-hour downtown. And then, and then streetscape and public realm improvements, which are really important. But we also recognize there are a lot of historic resources downtown. So there's a form-based code, which which is, again, a topic for another meeting that is that is embedded in the in the downtown precise plan. So again, quickly, these are the nine chapters of the downtown precise plan. I want to focus just for a moment on chapter four, which is the design vision. Basically, we're looking at four sub-areas within the downtown boundary, which, by the way, extends from the second and fourth, kind of the Miracle Mile intersection on the west to the edge of the Montecito Plaza on the east. So we're, we're on the other side of the freeway with this definition of downtown larger area than has traditionally been been included in that downtown boundary. But it's walking distance from the Transit Center and from SMART and includes several large sites that could be developed, redeveloped over the next twenty years. So we thought it was wise to include those in the boundary. There's a lot of information on historic resources that's been collected as part of this process that we can share with you at future meetings, some important transportation and parking policies. And if the reason for the affordable housing and anti-displacement strategy And if the reason for the affordable housing and anti displacement strategy. Strategy is that it is both an important issue as downtown develops, but also it is, it's also a requirement of the grant. That we receive to prepare this plan that we include an affordable housing and anti displacement strategy in the document. The form based code, just to say a word about that, it is. Basically going to replace the zoning code for downtown San Rafael, so the districts that you're familiar with. For downtown will be going away and the form based code will replace those with new zoning districts that look different. And feel different than the existing zone zoning categories and we'll talk, talking with you more about that in the next few meetings. So I'm going to stop there and just have Rafi do the last slide and talk a little bit about the hearings and the process. And then we'll turn it back to the commission for comments and questions. Thank you.
Thanks Barry, and great summary of where we've been, how we've gotten to where we are. And what I wanted to kind of do is talk you a little bit about what you're going to come see coming up. And again, the purpose of tonight's meeting is not, not to solicit input on the plan because we haven't. You haven't seen it yet, it hasn't been released to the public, but really just to kind of set the background and set the stage so you know what's coming and. How how we plan to present it to you, so. That being said, what what we're envisioning is to have a staggered release. First releasing the general plan in early October. And then followed by releasing the downtown precise plan and EIR in early November. The idea would be to have three initial meetings on the general plan. And also on the downtown precise plan. With the first two being covering the plan, talking about some of the details, diving into a little bit more, answering questions after you've had. A month to review it. And then the third meeting being kind of the follow up, if questions that come up, any suggestions that come up, kind of wrap that up. And bring it back to you for that third meeting. But that would be what we envisioned for both the general plan and the downtown precise plan. For the EIR, we would release the EIR and then we provide a sixty day public review period. The way it's looking is given that it would span through the holidays, that's why we're choosing to do sixty days rather than the state mandated forty five days. So this slide here will kind of show that general plan would be released in early October. In late October, we'd have a hearing on the draft general plan, chapters one through seven. And then. We would have a second hearing on chapters eight through fourteen. Then we'd come back for the actual document with the general plan for the final recommendation. Sometime in March for the final recommendation to the council. With the downtown precise plan that would be released in early November. We have a hearing in early December and early January. And then again, bring back the final downtown precise plan for final review and recommendation in March. And then the EIR would be released in early November with a public sixty day public review period and concluding in a planning commission meeting to accept comments. In early January at the end of the sixty days. Following the planning commission with your, if should your recommendation, then that would be forwarded to the city council for. Their review and ultimate action on the, on the process, so. That's what we are shooting for now, that is. We are really trying to make these dates work, but of course, they are still tentative and will depend on. The commission and your review and what sorts of questions or issues may come up during the review process. So that concludes our brief presentation. And Barry and I would both be happy to answer any sorts of questions you may have.
Thank you both, that was really good. I think I'll run it back to the commission, if there's. Questions or thoughts, we will open this up to the public. And eventually bring this back, I don't believe this is an action item tonight, but. Right now, some initial thoughts or feedback?
Hi Barry, what's the date, southeast San Rafael, the parameters?
So it's essentially. From downtown to the Richmond San Rafael Bridge below the canal. So south of the of the San Rafael canal, so it would include all of Anderson. All of Francisco East and West, the canal neighborhood, Spinnaker Bay Point.
Red Heart.
Well, that's, that's why, no, okay, cool, and the downtown precise plan. It, I'm guessing one of the things it does compared, I'm somewhat involved or was involved with the twenty twenty, so. It raises elevations, height, is that probably the predominant thing? The height is there increased?
Yeah, building heights primarily around the transit center would be increasing, we're not really looking at. Height increases in a lot of the other parts of of downtown.
Okay.
One of the things.
Yeah, go ahead Rafi.
Yeah, one of the things I'll add to that is that we, the other thing we're trying to do is kind of put a clear picture of the height. Including what bonuses may allow in one place in one document. Right now, as you know, we have a height map in our general plan. Then we have height bonuses that are in text and then you also have. State mandated bonuses, which can be really confusing for everybody, including staff. So what we're trying to do is really kind of make clear what the envelope is, base height and what the. Height would be with a bonus in in one document, so. It may look higher, but it's really just kind of folding a lot of things into one location. But Barry, as Barry did say, the one area where heights may be taller than what's currently allowed is around the transit station.
Thank you.
I have two quick questions.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, I think this is great work and I've been reviewing material that is available online. Some of the draft material and source material and whatnot, and I'm really impressed with where things are going. I just have two questions, they don't have to be answered now because I know you're not taking recommendations or whatnot, but I'm wondering. Do the statistics around, or is there, is there an intention for the statistics around? Housing and, you know, the available commercial space for those statistics to be. Calibrated with regard to sea level rise, in case we see. A higher rate of the sea level rise than has been anticipated, that's my first question, and I have one more.
So I would say yes, to some extent, I think there's some of the answers to the what you just asked will be. Will come after the general plan is adopted. Because first of all, there's, there's a PDA planning process that's going to focus on southeast San Rafael and the area where that is most vulnerable. And then there's an adaptation planning process that has to happen, that's I think going to get to that question a little bit, a little bit more detail. We're looking at, although it's a twenty forty general plan horizon, most of our sea level data is, we're benchmarking twenty fifty. As the, as as sort of the horizon that we're looking at, but we're also, we've got the twenty one hundred. Data as well, and you know, the further out you go, the more impactful. It is, and so, you know, we're sort of looking at it from multiple dimensions at this point, recognizing that there's. There are things you can do in the next few years and then there's things that we should be planning for longer term.
Great.
Commissioner Prevert, one other follow up to that is, I think the calibration that you may be alluding to. Is actually periodic reviews and updates of the general plan itself. So although we wish we can predict twenty thirty years down the road, we won't. Things will change, new things will come up and we do, we're really supposed to look at the plan every five years and kind of brush it off and. You know, make minor tweaks if things aren't working and so forth.
I see, that's great to know. So my other question is also related to climate change and it's about the. I think it's called the wildlife urban interface, so those areas of those neighborhoods that are adjacent to. Particularly hazardous spaces with regard to fire. And I'm just wondering if, you know, there's an emphasis on ensuring that those neighborhoods have. Proper evacuation routes, for instance, and safety around, you know, fire.
Yeah, so the plan has policies and programs related to evacuation routes and evacuation planning. Mostly though, we're cross referencing other documents that are explicitly for that purpose. So we don't have those plans within the general plan, but there, there's an emergency management program. That is much more focused on evacuation. And this cross references that, it's kind of the, where you can look in the general plan and find where to go to get the detail. On that, but it's certainly an issue that we've addressed in the plan. And one of the purposes of directing most of the development away from those areas is is to reduce the fire hazard risk.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I have two comments, sure, if I can be recognized.
Sure, please.
First of all, thank you Barry, that was an extremely succinct presentation, I could probably take some notes from you and how to deliver in that way, that was great. I did take the time to actually watch the presentation for San Rafael specifically on form based code. I, you said you would defer to later time to talk at that, about that in more length. I found that fascinating as was applied to San Rafael in the way that it was done on the, on the YouTube presentation. That was the optical contractor that did that, but I'm looking forward to that, I know that today we're not going to go into depth, but I find that fascinating.
Great, I'm glad you watched it.
Yeah, for the commission, that is one feature that we would highly recommend is we had some kind of. Form based code one oh one tutorials prepared for the public, for 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 staff and for the community and those are really helpful. So when we get down to the downtown precise plan, that'd be something that would help for you to review before actually looking at the document.
Good comments. Anyone else? Commissioner Davidson, I know you were on maybe the, was it like a subcommittee for the general plan, I don't know if you had any. Thoughts or input before we open it for the public?
I was gonna add, talk about my participation after the public comment, but I'll say a couple of things. When I first signed up for the task, it was extremely daunting and overwhelming. My profession is in civil engineering, so just. It was a tremendous growth for me as far as learning the big picture of all of, all of the issues the city. Deals with and it's very obvious that Barry is an expert at updating these general plans and. As he mentioned, we met about two, for two years, one day every Wednesday, on a Wednesday of every month for about two years. We cover all of those topics and it was, how many, twenty six of us in the committee? Rarely ever consensus, but great feedback, diverse comments from well represented, right? We have representation from all members, different types of people from all over the city. And definitely a great experience, I learned so much. From staff and the plethora of items that they deal with on a day to day. Thank you Barry for your, not only your expertise, but a great mediator, like I said, we didn't all agree. At times corralling twenty six of us in in two hours in a day, it's, it's very challenging, but. Dealing with a professional, of course, it was a great experience.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will, great comments everybody, maybe we'll open this up Rafi to the public if there. Is anyone who's joining us that would like to comment on this?
Yeah, so if there's anybody on the conference call line that wishes to provide a public comment. For this item, please press star nine to raise your hand. And really important that you turn down any device that you're watching the meeting on so that we don't get a feedback loop. So once it's your turn, you'll hear a notification that the host is inviting you to participate. Once you hear that notification, please press star six and that'll unmute you. You can go ahead and introduce yourself and provide your comments. And then for, while I wait for participants to press star nine, we're also accepting public comments on the YouTube live chat. So you just type your comment in, start with public comment in all capitals and provide your comment. And there is a two hundred character limit, so you may have to do it over multiple lines. So with that, I do see we have one phone in caller, so I'm going to go ahead and allow them to speak.
Good evening, this is Bill Carney. And I'm calling tonight on behalf of Sustainable San Rafael. But full disclosure, I did, we've been following this very closely, I was at all twenty five of those meetings that Barry talked about. And there is a whole lot of material as Barry has, you know, very. Has demonstrated tonight, so, but I thought it might be useful just to, to give a three minute version, right? A kind of highlights of all this material that you might want to kind of bear in mind as you go through this over the next several months. Just a couple of overriding themes from the standpoint of Sustainable San Rafael anyway. You know, I would start with housing, housing just being a critical overriding element here. And a great opportunity in both the general plan and in the downtown plan in particular. To not only fulfill the need that we have for more housing, particularly affordable housing. But also to revitalize downtown in the process, that there's a major, you know, evolution going on in in downtown in these next twenty years. As well as in north, north, Northgate Town Center. So that was number one, and number two, you guys have already touched on quite a bit, which is the climate impacts. You know, that's the other thing, you look at the next twenty years going forward, that's huge and, you know, wildfires and shorelines, hillsides and shorelines. Have already been referenced, I think as, you know, we look at this as a planning document. To guide the next twenty years, we really need to think about, okay, what populations are going to be displaced? Not by economic factors, but by climate factors and and where, what, how can we manage that displacement by creating? Again, more housing, more opportunity in our downtown centers that are higher up and and further away from the, from the hillsides. So that's a, you know, the second really great big theme, and I think looking at housing densities and things like that, as well as the transfer. Of some development rights from places that are vulnerable to places where we want to see denser development. Which leads me to the third thing, which is the form based code, and I would just really, you know, fascinating stuff, I would really focus attention on its goals. Which is create a very attractive built environment and also a very walkable built environment downtown. So those goals really as guiding principles helped me understand, you know, what, what that, this whole new code language was about. And then finally, you know, public improvements are really important and I'm glad that the plan, the general plan and the downtown plan incorporate things like. Really great opportunities to restore creeks and bring nature more strongly into particularly the transit district. With Irwin Creek and Creek and Mahone Creek, San Rafael Creek, et cetera, it's a great opportunity there. And also the bringing in pathways, not just recycling, but for walking. Like Tamla, Tamla Palace Avenue, these could be great form givers for the city. And as we think about codes, we need to think about those public improvements as well, so. You know, thank you for taking on the task of carrying this work forward, I really appreciate it and it's a very interesting endeavor, thanks a lot.
Sorry, we have nobody else calling in yet and I see no comments in the chat, so last opportunity for public comments. And I see nothing else, Chair Mercado.
Great, thank you, okay, we'll close the public comment, bring it back. If the commissioners have any additional thoughts or comments or input? Ideas, questions? Because I kind of see any. And Rafi, can I just, oh, go ahead.
I'll just add a comment and it's similar to the one I made when we discussed the housing issue. I'll just add a comment and it's similar to the one I made when we discussed the housing issue at our previous meeting. And I, I didn't write down the numbers, Barry, but I think you mentioned the anticipated number of houses or housing anticipated in San Rafael versus the additional jobs anticipated. And it's obvious that, you know, we're not creating as, we're not attracting as many, well, we're attracting jobs into the city, but they're mainly low-paying jobs and we obviously have a deficit in the, in the housing inventory. And then when you do the projections, we're going to be dealing with this issue for the next 20 years on the housing shortage and the, the income gaps that we have. And you mentioned that I think San Rafael or the Bay Area has one of the bigger gaps as far as income. So as a commissioner, in, in the last few years, that's always been a challenge that we bring in. We're opening up businesses, but we kind of don't think about the workers. And when we propose affordable housing, it's always very controversial. We can find a million reasons why not to allow them. So that's something we're going to be dealing with in the future. So having those policies in the plan and then followed up by a, a work plan and translating those into the ordinances and codes that planning commissioners will be able to benefit from is really, really important to me.
Thank you.
I guess one question I have, I'm not sure who would be able to answer this potentially, but what is, what is the plan? Or what is the sort of overall strategy around attracting more developers into the city? Because we know the, you know, cost of land and the cost of sort of dealing with a lot of the, the pushback that comes with any new development.
Rafi, do you want to reply or should I?
I would say the, you know, kind of the main, the main emphasis on that sort of topic would be the Form-Based Code. I think that is one of the main visions is to create a more predictable and defined process for development, particularly in the downtown where the Form-Based Code is, where developers and people interested in adding housing or other growth in the downtown can do it, have the clear idea of what it is, and if they follow this process, have a more predictable outcome than what we see now. So I'd say that's the primary driving point. You know, other than that, there's lots of policies to try and promote growth. Some of those also come from the state, they're handed state down, that we have to react to. Others are from the city. The city's already done a lot of improvements and modifications to try and streamline second units and other small projects and, you know, waiving impact, traffic impact fees on those smaller things. And so I think those are kind of the two main, two main areas. Barry, if you have anything else to?
Well, yeah, I just was going to add that the answer to the question is going to be a little bit different if you're talking about employment growth versus residential growth. And so a lot of the residential growth equation is really addressed in the housing element. And we've, we've laid the groundwork for that in the general plan, but the kind of, I would say the, the rolling up your sleeves on how we're going to get the housing built is really still to come. I mean, it's, there's some, some of that happens in the general plan. On the employment side, I would say we, we've beefed up the economic vitality element of the general plan a lot and consolidated some of the land use categories in a way that I think is conducive to, to more jobs. And for example, there are three categories on the map today for office development and we have one category on the new map. I just, these kind of streamlining steps that we're taking to make it a little easier to get through the process of getting approval, you know, they're important. And I think just the, the whole commitment in the plan to creating a great quality of life really comes through in saying this is a city where you want to invest, where you want to be in the future, where, you know, where, where the place to be.
Good questions. I, I would piggyback on that a little bit too, with this inclusion now of equity, diversity and inclusion and how this being such a hot button issue. I think that ties into the question of attracting developers, both market rate and affordable, because there may be incentives out there and we have a city that's pretty bifurcated in its communities. And hopefully there's some discussion through the specific plan or the general plan as to how we're bridging some of these gaps. Because to me, that seems like a really critical equity, diversity and inclusion discussion, which then will carry over on attracting developers and funding sources. So I see a nice lineage or conversation that could evolve from that. Anyone else? Any other thoughts or questions, comments? Barry did, and Rafi did a great job, but I'll give one last shot before we can entertain a motion to accept the information report. And this may be a bit soliciting, but I'll also put it back on Rafi and Barry, whether there's anything else, any items or questions you would like us to maybe chew on a little bit right now before we wrap this thing up? Or if there's anything?
I, I think that, you know, the big thing for us again today was to give you some sense of where we're headed with the public, upcoming public review process. Just so you're, you don't just get a big document dropped on you and you don't know what's kind of the, the format will be and how we're going to break down the various meetings. And if you had any thoughts on that, does, you know, the, the plan as we outlined, does that make sense for you? If there's any comments about that, that would be helpful for us to know.
Commissioner Davidson may have a question.
Mainly for you, Rafi. What's the expectation of us as commissioners as far as feedback on the EIR that's being prepared for the general plan update? What's our role through that process? What's expected of us?
I think in your role as a planning commissioner is to recommend to the council whether the EIR was adequately addressed impacts and adequately, you know, quantified them, explained them and analyzed them. And then if there's, make your sequel findings, whether the, the impacts were in mitigations were appropriate. And if there's any overrides, which there likely will be with the, a general plan update, whether the overrides are warranted. And so how you're going to do that is by listening to the various comments that come in on the draft EIR and determining whether, you know, they have been adequately addressed or not in the document. And if not, you provide your recommendation. And you're also, the commission is also a forum to accept oral comments. So most of the EIR comments come in in writing during the 60-day public review period from responsible agencies, you know, local agencies as well as the public. But some will take the opportunity to make their comments orally and the planning commission provides a forum for them to make that. And we'll take all the comments we receive and respond to them as we prepare the final EIR or our environmental consultant will. So I think it's really to review the document, make sure if somebody brings something up, whether you think it's been adequately addressed or not in, in the document. Of course, we'll provide, our environmental consultants will provide their input. We can provide our input as well.
Okay, thank you.
If I can add also, this is not in response to Commissioner Davidson's kind of, but just the general statement about the fact that we have this steering committee that convened 25 times over two and a half years and spent a lot of time in the weeds on all of these issues, I think will help the commission in that we've, we've sussed out a lot of the controversy. And not to say that you're not going to have a lot of controversy when we get into some of the policies. And, and, you know, I actually hope that we have more attendees at, at our public hearings and future meetings, because this is the future of the city we're talking about. But I think the, the steering committee in many ways has done a lot of the heavy lifting by debating the issues and providing the direction to staff and drafting the policies. And, and I've worked in other communities where it was the planning commission that was given that responsibility. And in, in this case, that, that is not what we've done. We've actually tasked this representative group of 25 people with the, the task of, of going through all these topics and providing that feedback. So what we're delivering to you in, in a sense is, is their work over this period of time that will hopefully avoid the, the need to revisit a lot of things that have been, you know, discussed pretty, pretty thoroughly in the last two years. At least at the general plan level, I would say, you know, with the downtown plan and the Form-Based Code, there may be more conversation, you know, more questions. But I think we've, we've vetted the general plan through the, through the process of the steering committee.
Anyone else? I think the schedule looks fine, Rafi. I would just say one thing is Zoom meetings are very hard. So if we have a chunky plate one night, don't add more food on it. You know, if we're going three plus hours, it's, it's, it is challenging on Zoom. So it's hard to gauge breaks and things like that. So as a, as a commissioner, we have to, or a commission, be mindful of that because this is really important. So making sure we have that energy and sort of the, the gas in the tank to carry it through on these nights. But I understand the timing of it. So let us know, maybe a little heads up as we get into it, what meetings may really require a bit more of, you know, have snacks ready kind of thing. Anyone else before we make a motion? I think this was great. Good roadmap for what we're looking at over the next few months. If not, then I think we can entertain a motion to thankfully and appreciatively accept the information and the report that was provided tonight.
I move to accept the report.
Second that?
Who was the second? I'm sorry?
John Prebitoli.
Thank you.
And maybe to make it easier for staff, do we need to do a roll call or is that eyes by everyone?
I think we can probably.
Yeah. If there's any non-eyes, feel free to say that now.
I'm seeing six eyes. All right.
Yes, unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Barry.
Good night. All right, thanks.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, that is our, I believe our last public agenda item. So now maybe we'll move it over to staff for any updates to the commission.
I do have about an hour's worth of reporting to do.
Sweet.
I have some things to mention, but I think I'll just keep it very short and sweet. I wanted to mention that we are in the next phase of opening. Our restaurants and retails have been advised that they are able to expand their opening to indoors with some limitations. So that's really exciting. Things are starting to hopefully improve and we'll hopefully be responding to Chair Mercado's request to stop with the Zoom sometime soon. So there's other stuff, but I think we can go ahead and wait till the next time to get additional reporting.
One, Ally, if I could just jump in, there is one thing I want to alert the commission to. It's regarding one of your upcoming meetings in November. As you may know, the, as part of the budget considerations, the city is furloughing its employees. And there's certain days that have been, the city hall will be closed. One of those times will conflict with a scheduled planning commission meeting. So typically we'd meet on November 10th, which is the second Tuesday of November. That day falls on the day before Veterans Day, which is a scheduled holiday. So one of the, one of the, the two furlough days out of the 13 that have been assigned are the Monday and Tuesday. So city hall will be closed on Monday, the ninth and Tuesday, the 10th. So the planning commission meeting cannot occur. Given our timeline with the general plan and the, in the need to hopefully space out meetings and trying to get agenda items on, we are planning to proceed with a meeting on the Thursday night, which would be the 12th, November 12th. So I just wanted to give you that heads up early that that will most likely be a night where we have a general plan or I think it's a downtown precise plan item discussing on that night. So it's a Thursday, November 12th instead of Tuesday, November 10th.
Are, are we sure the Niners are not playing that Thursday night? I don't think, I'm not sure, but that might, just kidding.
Good question. So that's the only other thing I had is just to mark your calendars and I'll send you an email with an update of that as well.
Good.
That's good, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Any commissioner updates? Anybody got anything to announce? No? All right. Well, thank you, everyone. With that, I think we will adjourn tonight's meeting.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Good night. Thanks.